We'll resume with Rule 29. So Ken will resume with Rule 29.
Please give me a little.
All right, so now we're into these next four rules. We know is, or we've been saving the best for last season. Everyone's been coming. So Rule 29, now we'll cover different forms of play. To date, we've largely, so far, we've largely talked about individual stroke play and match play, occasionally with the four ball situation. Now we'll touch on some other forms of play. Rule 29 covers threesomes and foursomes. So remember first our definitions. Threesome is one against two in match play with the two playing one ball alternately. And then a foursome, you could have match play or stroke play, two against two, each side playing one ball, and each side would have to decide who is going to play from the odd number Ts, who's going to play from the even number Ts. So 29-1, during the round, the players must play alternately from the team grounds and alternately during play of each hole. Penalty strokes do not affect the order of play. So what that means is, let's say if Arnold and I are partners, and I'm playing from the odd number Ts, on the first hole, I go hit our T shot into a bush on the right, we deem the ball and play the ball, that Arnold would still play our next shot, even though it would be our third shot on the hole because of the penalty stroke, that Arnold would still play next. And really, the rest of the rule just deals with making sure that the partners play in the correct sequence. In match play, if a player plays when a partner shouldn't have played, the side loses the hole. So for example, if Arnold and I are partners, and I'm playing from the odd number Ts, and by accident, we get to the second T and I tee off, then we lose the hole. Or if on the first hole, I tee off, and then I hit the second shot, we lose the hole, each time I played when Arnold should have played. Now in stroke play, it's going to be a little more involved. If the partners make a stroke in the incorrect order, first, the stroke or strokes are canceled, and the side incurs two penalty strokes. And there's the further requirement that the side correct the error by playing a ball in the correct order as nearly as possible at the spot from which it first played in the incorrect order. And if the side plays from the next team ground without having corrected this mistake, then the side is disqualified. So this is the fifth and final situation we've seen in stroke play where a player, or in this case, a side, must correct a mistake or be disqualified. We saw Rule 3-2, fair to hole out. 11-4B, playing from outside the team ground. 15-3B, play of a wrong ball. And 20-7C, a serious breach of playing from the wrong place. So it could have, so in stroke play, that mistake must be corrected, that side cannot intentionally just accept the two-stroke penalty in order, say, to have the weaker player avoid playing a certain shot. They have to play in the correct order. Now the decisions, and then there are few especially helpful decisions that address some points that the rules themselves won't or don't discuss. We'll see those in 29/4 and 6. But first, starting with 29/2, is a good decision, but it just emphasizes what stroke and distance means. So you have mixed foursome, men play from the back Ts, women play from the forward Ts. A man hits a T shot out of bounds, so where does his partner play from? Well, under Rule 27-1 and 20-5, where do they have to go for stroking distance? Where that ball is played from, which would be from the back T. So his partner, even though the partner ordinarily plays from the forward Ts, would have to play from the back T. Decision 29/4 asks the question as to who drops a ball in a foursome competition? And the answer is that the member whose turn is to play next must drop the ball. So let's say if Andy and I are partners, and I hit our T shot into a lateral water hazard, and we take relief from that, then Andy would be the one to drop the ball, since he would be the one to play the next shot. 29/6, another one situation where you won't find the answer in the rules themselves. Who has to sign the scorecard in foursome stroke play? Now, and the answer is although Rule 29 is silent on the matter, in foursome stroke play, only one of the partners need comply with Rule 6-6B. So you don't have to have both partners sign the scorecard. And let's see, the other 29 decisions are pretty straightforward. Any questions about 29?
What comes up is who plays the provisional ball?
Okay, all right. Well, who plays the provisional ball, which is, oh, here, it's 29-1/3. A drives, and there's doubt whether the ball is out of bounds. They decided to play a provisional ball. Who plays it? Well, the provisional ball is played by B, which makes sense. And let's say, for example, Ken, if you and I are partners, I hit the T shot, and we know for sure it's out of bounds, so there's no provisional ball, then we know that you would play the next shot. Right? So it makes sense that if you had played the next shot in such a case, that you would also play the provisional ball if we wanted to do that. All right, on to Rule 30, which covers three-ball, best ball, and four-ball match play. So first, and Dan and I were talking about this before class, 30-1 is kind of an interesting rule, saying that the rules of golf do apply to this form of play that's contained in the Rules of Golf booklet, which is reassuring. 30-2 deals with three-ball match play. So let's remember our definition, what three-ball match play is. It's when three players play, really, three different matches. So let's say, for example, Tim, Ken, and I are playing a three-ball match. What do we have? I am playing a match against Ken, I'm playing a separate match against Tim, and Tim and Ken are playing match against each other. So we have three different matches going on, and these two sections of Rule 30-2 really emphasize that, that they are two different matches, and as much as possible, in terms of applying the rules, we should separate those and be mindful of who is involved. So in 30-2A, if an opponent incurs a penalty stroke under Rule 18-3B for moving a player's ball in play, that penalty is incurred only in the match with the player whose ball is touched or moved, no penalty is incurred in this match with the other player. So let's say that Ken's ball is in the fairway, and I'm walking on the fairway, I'm not searching for his ball, I'm just not paying attention to where I'm walking, and I accidentally kick and move Ken's ball. We know that under Rule 18-3B, that I'm going to incur one penalty stroke for that, and the ball has to be replaced. So the question is, do I incur a penalty stroke in my match against Tim? And the answer to that is no, because in that, not my match against Tim, or in my match against Ken, Tim is just an outside agency. So what I did with relation to Ken's ball has nothing to do with the match between Tim and me, so therefore, there would be no penalty. And what's interesting with that is that means I'm going to wind up with two different scores for the hole. Say in my match against Tim, I might make five, and my match against Tim, I make four on the hole. Clause B is similar. The player's ball is accidentally deflected or stopped by an opponent, there's no penalty. In the match with that opponent, the player may cancel only play the stroke or stroke and stand. So let's say, same three-ball match, I shank a ball, and it strikes Ken. And so what happens in that case? That in my match against Ken, I have the option to cancel only play the stroke or let the stroke stand. But how about my match against Tim? Well, in my match against Tim, what status does Ken have? He's an outside agency. So under 19-1, what happens if your ball's deflected by an outside agency?
Play as it lies.
Play as it lies. So that means in my match against Tim, I have to play the ball as it lies, whereas in my match against Ken, I have a choice. And this is a way, another one of those bar bets you can win. Ask somebody, $5, true or false? In match play, a player can never play two balls. And the answer would be false. This is one situation where a player could, under the rules, be playing two balls simultaneously. Because I have to play the ball as it lies in my match against Tim, but in my match against Ken, I could cancel only play, in which case I would be playing, play out the hole with two different balls. So again, the key with that is as much as possible, and there could be other applications within the rules, separate the two matches. All right, best ball, we talked about that it's when one plays against two, or the better ball of two, or the best ball of three. But the same rulings really apply in four ball, and since four ball is much more common, we will focus on four ball with our examples. Now Clause A, a side may be represented by one partner for all or any part of a match. All, excuse me, all partners need not be present. So an absent partner may join a match between holes, but not during play of a hole. And one little nuance, you know, to keep in mind, and there is a philosophical reason for it, is under 30-3A, underline a match. Player may join a match between holes, but not during play of a hole. And contrast that with Rule 31-2, which is four-ball stroke play. In the second sentence, that reads, an absent competitor may join his partner between holes, but not during play of a hole. So I would underline a match in 30-3A and underline his partner in 31-2. Those are two very different situations. So let's say, for example, that Arnold and I are partners, first and four-ball match play. And we are playing against Dan and Andy. And Dan and Andy have the honor, at the first hole, I am not there yet. And it's our starting time, and Dan tees off. And then I arrive right after Dan tees off. So based on 30-3A, may I play the first hole? And the answer is no, because the match has started play of the hole. One person in the match has teed off, so I cannot play the first hole. But under 31-2, same situation, but if that were in stroke play, what would the ruling be? And it would be a little bit of a, there's a wrinkle to it in stroke play. There's, there are two questions. One, may I play? And if I may play, is there any penalty? So the first question is, may I join Arnold on the first hole? In that case, in four-ball stroke play? The answer is yes, that I may, because Arnold, my partner, has not started play of the hole. Would there be any penalty for me to join him at that point, on the first hole? Keep in mind, this is the first hole. So the answer would be different if you say this Rule number six. Yeah, I missed our starting time, so I would incur a two-stroke penalty for being late, if I could play on the first hole. So then the question is, why the very different results in match play and stroke play? Well, in match play, it makes sense that when Dan tees off, he should know who his opponent, opposition is for that hole. And it's not fair for him to tee off thinking that he has to play against only Arnold, and then to realize he has to play against Arnold and Andy together. You know, but if he knew he had to go up against two people, that might have affected his play. Whereas in stroke play, it's, the key is just when you return your score at the end of the round, it's not the head-to-head strategy during the round necessarily. So that's why you're, I could join, as long as my partner hasn't started play at the hole. So just something to keep in mind there. Now 30-3B, and this provision holds true in four-ball stroke play as well.
If you were given, if they said the first name, the first, the first team on the score sheet, tees off first, could you, you and your co-competitor agree to let the other team go first, because you know your partner's in the par lot, and you want to give them a chance in the four ball to get there?
Oh, I see. So in four-ball stroke play, if the two sides agree not to play in the correct order, hopefully to allow time for the absent player to arrive. And I think the question there would be, are we in breach of Rule 10-2C? Are we agreeing to play out of turn for the purpose of giving one of us an advantage? And it seems harsh. I think you'd say, yeah, we are, in which case the penalty is disqualification, even though that seems like a, first, it seems like a nice thing to do and a reasonable thing to do, but it's, I don't know what you all think, but I've been trying to say 10-2C would apply for that situation. Okay, Dan feels a little less bad about it than I would.
I have a question, but I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask it. But there's a little bit of discrepancy. It refers to three-ball match play, and then it refers to four-ball match play, as if they're two different games. But you can have four-ball match play, which is the same as three-ball match play. In other words, instead of three players teaming up, you have four players teaming up, and they're each playing a match with the other.
Oh, so you're saying that you could have a form of play where, but you have to come up with a different name for it, that's similar to three-ball, but involving four players?
Exactly. So along with that, I have a question. And this is the question, this actually happened this fall, the Milwaukee District Team Championship. What they do is they have four teams, and each team has six players, and they have six, four, groups of four, and each one playing a match. In one group, they said before they teed off, that any concession would have to be unanimous. In other words, I can't say to Andy, your ball is good, and the other two players, it would, which would only be a concession between me and Andy, not between any of the other players and Andy. But they agreed that it had to be unanimous. Is that an agreement to waive the rules?
Well, so are you saying the committee said?
No, no, this group.
You mean just this one group?
Yeah.
Well, whether agreement of the four players that any concession would have to be unanimous to be binding, I think that comes down to whether they knew that the rules don't really allow that, and they were going ahead and doing it anyway. Odds are, they probably thought that the rules allow that, and that was just a sensible thing to do, in which case, while they're wrong, it's not an agreement to waive the rules. But that does raise kind of an interesting point, where, say, if you use the three-ball format over the four players, which is a pretty, I think, a reasonable form of play, that that's strictly speaking, a format not recognized by the rules. And it's interesting that we have to come up with a different name, since you really can't call it a four ball.
It's interesting that they never thought it could happen.
Yeah, but I, and that's, it's pretty reasonable.
Yeah. And the funny part is, the player conceded, they agreed that it wasn't a concession, because the others didn't agree, and he ended up missing the putt.
Yeah.
That's why you remember.
And your situation, was it strictly match play or?
No, it was match play.
No, no.
Not anymore. Thanks to John.
Okay.
Thanks to John.
So John, you made it so it now conforms to Rule 33-1, no match play in stroke play and turn lanes?
After 50 years. But it's still what I'm recognizing to this game, so.
So you're saying, why are we wasting our time with that? All right, so balls belonging to the same side may be played in the side that, in the order the side considers best, so that could apply whether it's on the team ground or during play of the hole. Often, players may decide to play out of the normal turn for strategic purposes. For example, if David and I are partners, I have a 10-foot putt for a par along the same line as he has a 15-foot putt for birdie, I might go ahead and putt for my par first, as he might benefit from that and get a good read for his birdie putt. And that is okay. Wrong ball, if a player incurs the penalty for playing a wrong ball, note, he's disqualified for the hole. Note that the reason, you can't just say if a player plays a wrong ball, he's disqualified for the hole, is there's still that minor exception for playing a wrong ball, moving in water, and a water hazard, for which there's no penalty. Now, but if you are in breach of Rule 15-3A, then you are disqualified for that hole, but your partner incurs no penalty, even if the wrong ball belongs to him. So take the extreme case, where, say, Arnold and I are partners, our balls are out in the fairway, and by mistake, I play Arnold's ball. So we know I'm disqualified from the hole. And Arnold specifically incurs no penalty, even though he might benefit from that, because he might benefit from the club selection, knowing what club I just used, from seeing how the wind reacted to the ball, to how well the green held, and so forth. But even if he indirectly benefited from that, he still incurs no penalty. 30-3D, penalty to the side. The side is penalized for breach of any of the following by any partner. So if just one partner breaches one of these rules, then the side incurs that penalty. And with these rules, what's interesting is, keep in mind that these rules have multiple, have different penalties within them. For example, under Rule 4, there could be the breach where, say, Arnold and I are partners, and on the first green, we realize I have a nonconforming club, which I have not yet used. Then in that case, we know the penalty is a deduction of one hole from the state of the match, so we finish the first hole, deduct one hole from the state of the match. So even if my score for the first hole would have been seven and Arnold's four, the good news is that Arnold's four does count in terms of whether we win or have or lose the hole. But the fact that I, someone who scored not count, had a nonconforming club, we're still going to deduct one hole from the standing after that. Now, let's see what happens if on the first hole, I have a nonconforming club, and I actually used it on the first hole. Then we know under Rule 4-1, that the penalty is disqualification, which means unfortunately, what? That we're disqualified, and Arnold probably won't invite me back to the tournament next year. So that applies to, so whatever the penalty is, the side will incur that. And part of the reason for that is because these rules, in many cases, involve penalties that are an adjustment to the state of the match. And since that's really not a penalty that could be applied to only one partner, it has to be applied to the side. Now 30-3E, sides disqualified if one partner incurs a penalty of disqualification under any of the following. Agreement to waive the rules, for example, Rule 4, if one player makes a stroke with a nonconforming club, and so forth. Then Subclause 2, sides disqualified if all partners incur a penalty of disqualification under the following. So for example, if neither one of us is at the starting time point, then five minutes, we would be disqualified. Neither one of us resumes play at the correct time. And in all other cases where a breach results in disqualification, the player is disqualified for that hole only. And especially in match play, there aren't, there are very few examples of application of that third clause there. 30-3F, and this, in stroke play, has a similar but different provision, and we should be aware of the difference. If a player's breach of rule assists his partner's play, or adversely affects an opponent's play, then the partner incurs the applicable penalty in addition to any penalty incurred by the player. So let's go through a couple of examples. Let's say that Ken and I are partners in four-ball match play, and my ball lies in a bunker, Ken's ball lies on the putting green. I remove a pine cone from the bunker, so I am going to be disqualified from that hole. Does Ken incur any penalty? Answer is no, because my removal of that pine cone did not assist him, and it did not adversely affect an opponent. Now let's say we have a situation where Ken, both of our balls are in the bunker, I remove a pine cone. So I am disqualified from the hole. But does Ken incur any penalty? Possibly. It would depend on the facts. The fact that his ball's in the same bunker does not by itself mean that he is penalized. But if his ball was so close to where that pine cone was that I removed, that he would benefit from that, then he would also be disqualified from the hole, which would mean we would lose the hole. But if his ball was, say, 10 feet in front of that pine cone, then he wouldn't, that removal of the pine cone did not assist him, so there's no penalty for Ken. So he can still salvage the hole for us. And likewise, if I were to do something that adversely affected an opponent's play, for example, I try intentionally to deflect this ball, Andy's ball, to go into a water hazard or something like that, then we know I'm in breach of Rule 1-2, and Ken would be also, so we would lose the hole. And we'll see, in stroke play, similar provision, but stroke play does not include the concept of adversely affecting an opponent's play. So first, let's go over some of the decisions under Rule 30. 30/2.5 is a decision that a number of people questioned for many years, and that decision was reversed for 2014. So it's helpful to be aware of that change. In a four-ball match, A and B are playing against C and D. A touches the putting green pointing out B's line for putting. The spot that A touches is also on A's line of putt by pure coincidence. What's the ruling? Well, we know that B is going to be disqualified from the hole under Rule 8-2B for having, for the putting green being touched when the line of putt was pointed out for him. So the question is, what about A? Should A be penalized because he coincidentally touched his own line of putt? And the new answer is that yes, he should be. So they're both disqualified from the hole, which means they lose the hole. Decision 30-3/1 talks about, you know, and I know in several parts of the country, a common form of play, especially interclub play, is to have a four-ball match with two concurrent singles matches being played against each other. And that can be quite involved. And this decision is here just to offer guidance on 30-3/1. Big decision on page 469. And this decision offers some guidance. And the key themes in the first paragraph, where it says, whenever possible, the rules are applied only to the match affected. When it's not possible to separate the matches, then the four-ball match takes precedent. So, you know, somewhat talking, picking up on what that Ken had talked about with his form of play with how they treat concessions, you have multiple matches going on. And the rule number one, A concedes the match or hole or stroke to C, but stipulates that the concession is solely for the singles match. Is that okay? The answer is yes. In that case, the concession is not valid in the four-ball match. However, what if A makes the concession, but does not specify for which match? Then it would apply both to the four-ball match and to the single match. Example seven is another good one. On the third hole, it's discovered that B started with 15 clubs. So in the four-ball match, we just saw the side is penalized. So the side will have two holes deducted, and B will have two holes deducted from the state of his singles match against D. However, in the match... However, in the match between, singles match between A and C, there is no penalty because in that match, B is just an outside agency. So again, another decision that's helpful to get to know that establishes a guiding principle, then offers a number of examples to reinforce that. Let's see, 30-3/3, I believe we talked about under Rule 2-. Pretty interesting decision, just says that another rule would apply in four-ball match play. So that means that if, let's see, if, in order to paint one scenario, let's say David and I are partners playing against Arnold and Andy, and if, let's see, if Arnold and Andy have hold out for a five, and one of us, and let's say both David and I have putts for a five, and Arnold or Andy breaches a rule, then we just apply the rule and we don't worry about the fact that David and I were putting for a half. That if Arnold or Andy does something for which the penalty is loss of hole, then that, then the guilty partner would be disqualified from that hole. Let's see, 30-3A/1, we talked about the example on the first tee with an absent partner joining the match. What about during the play of a hole? And this raises the question that, okay, let's say A is not there when someone tees off on the fourth hole, but he goes ahead and plays the fourth hole. What's the ruling? Well, A incurs the general penalty, is disqualified for the hole, and if any of A's strokes assisted B, then B is also disqualified from the hole. 30-3A/3, in a four-ball handicap match, the common practice is to have the player with the lowest handicap play to scratch, and the other handicaps adjusted down accordingly. So what happens if four players are scheduled to play, and the player with the lowest handicap is not there? Should the absent player be disregarded in determining the handicap allowances? The answer is no. You should still take that into account, in part, because why? You never know. What if he shows up? Or if the absent partner joins on the sixth hole? I need to be able to, or you want to have the match being played under the proper terms.
So the arithmetic doesn't change?
The arithmetic doesn't change?
Well, it's still the same difference between all the other players.
Well, you're right.
Respect to each other.
It is, it is the same difference, right? But it does, it is the same difference, but it does affect, I suppose, where the strokes would fall. Decision 30-3F/2, there are a number of decisions under 30-3F that are helpful to get comfortable with thinking through when the side is penalized and when just the guilty player is penalized. In a four-ball match, A and B are partners. A's ball is stroking a bunker and failed to get the ball out. He then swung his club into the sand, but his action did not affect his new line. Okay, so if that happened in individual play, what would be the ruling? You know, the player would be in breach of Rule 13-4, so two strokes or loss of hole in match play. So we know that player A himself is disqualified for the hole. So the question is, what if his partner, B? And then, well, there are two questions. What's the ruling if B's ball lay in the same bunker? And what if B's ball lay elsewhere? And the answer says the penalty does not apply to B unless A's action assisted B's play or adversely affected an opponent's play. And it is challenging to think of how swinging in the sand could have done either of those things. Decision 30-3F/13 provides an example of a breach that would assist his partner, which would therefore result in the side's losing the hole. A and B are partners. A's ball is on the putting green 30 feet from the hole. B's ball is 20 feet from the hole on a similar line. To assist him with his own putt, B stands on the extension of the line of putt behind A's ball while A putts. What's the ruling? Okay, well, under 14-2B, A is in breach of that rule, so A is disqualified from the hole. So the question then is, did B, was B assisted by that? And the answer, or it's really just stated as a fact, is that yes, it was, since B had a putt on a similar line and would benefit from standing there and observing A's ball, B was assisted, so therefore, the side loses the hole in match play. So any questions on Rule 30 there? All right, now we'll talk about the stroke play version of four-ball. And one thing that'll be very interesting this year is that, as you know, in fact, WSGA conducted a qualifier for, you know, months ago, is we're going to have the first U.S. four-ball championships, one for women and one for men. And to see how this added focus on four-ball play, if we see any increase in number of decisions or any rules changes to these rules, as some situations may well arise that, you know, perhaps the WSGA and RNA have not been focusing on, in part because they didn't have any championships with that form of play. So it'll be interesting to see. Let's see, 31-2, representation aside, we talked about how that's different, and there's a little more leeway in stroke play than in match play for an absent partner joining his partner. 31-3, something that is, that's unique to stroke play that we didn't cover in four-ball match play with scoring. The markers require the record for each hole, only the gross score of whichever partner scores to count. The gross scores to count must be individually identifiable, otherwise side is disqualified. Only one of the partners need be responsible for complying with Rule 6-6B regarding signing it both as a marker and as the player whose name's on the card. The key point here, where often you see players running amiss, is with having the gross scores individually identifiable. Let's say that Bill and I are partners, and if on the first hole, Bill makes four, I make five, and Bill just writes a big four across both our boxes for us, just as one score applying for both of us, that's, that does not meet the requirements of this rule, because the committee needs to know who made a four for that hole.
Yeah, when WSGA events, I mean, four-ball, don't you require everybody to put a score in the box? Do you know?
We don't require. We recommend it because we're going to wind up posting their score, but we mentioned that if they fail the hole out, they should draw an X with the score they most likely would have made. But the individually identifiable, from my experience, people think this, seem to think that that's our WSGA rule. I think they don't realize it's actually a rule of golf. And at our four-ball, we spend a lot of time doing what you mentioned, telling people that have put one giant number, that we need to know who made what on which hole. It's always best just to keep score for each player, but the requirement is more for handicap purposes than it is for the purpose of 31-3.
It is interesting, from the committee's perspective, scoring in four-ball stroke play becomes much, much more involved than just individual stroke play. It's the committee's responsibility to determine what their better ball score is for each hole. And also imagine if it's a net event, so the committee is also responsible for applying the handicap. And then if you really want to make it a mess, make it a net four-ball Stableford event. And then the committee has to determine how many points they get for each hole. So within two days, you should know the results of the tournament. But it's, it's a lot. It's a lot for the committee to have to do. 31-4, as we saw in stroke match play, balls may be played in order the side considers best. Wrong ball, similar theme in that only the player plays the wrong ball is penalized. But in this case, it's not, he's not disqualified from the hole. As in match play, he incurs two penalty strokes and must correct the mistake. But what happens if the player does not correct the mistake? That under Rule 31-7C, whereas a player would normally be disqualified for failing to correct, playing a wrong ball, he would just be disqualified for that hole. So as long as his partner has a score for that hole, they are okay. 31-6, penalty to a side. Now, similar to what we saw in match play, that the side is penalized if either partner breaches one of these rules. 31-7A, a side is disqualified if either partner... Just curious why 31-6 says any partner, 31-7 says either partner. What do you think, Dan? Well, it's only fair I get to ask you a question occasionally.
Typically, USGA doesn't pay attention to words?
Well, since we're being recorded, I won't comment. But, especially since I'm, you could argue, to blame. If either partner incurs a penalty of disqualification under any of the following, then the side is disqualified, which is tough, that you could have a case where Arnold and I are partners, Arnold lights it up for 30 on the front nine, and then on number 10, we realize that I made one stroke with a nonconforming club on number four, and then we're disqualified. Arnold's 30 was for no. 31-7B, sides disqualified if both partners incur a penalty of disqualification under 6-3, so if we both miss our starting time beyond five minutes, or say we both don't resume play at the proper time, or if at the same hole, each partner is in breach of a rule, the penalty for which is disqualification. So for example, if on one hole, we each play a wrong haul, and neither one of us corrects that mistake, then we don't have a score for that hole and we're disqualified. 31-7C, which is part of the benefit of the four-ball format, is in all other cases where a breach will result in disqualification, the competitors disqualified only for the hole at which the breach occurred. Which means, for example, if I have a, if I'm having a bad hole and I don't hole out, then while normally Rule 3-2 would say that's disqualification, the result in four-ball play is I'm, I would be disqualified just for that hole. 31-8, which is different than this provision in match play. If a competitor's breach assists his partner's play, the partner incurs the same penalty. Note, there's no provision against there being the partner incuring the penalty if the breach adversely affects a fellow competitor. Let's see, some decisions. 31-1, which is similar in something, it's a useful decision. For example, we just saw, we've seen it several pro-am's on the PGA Tour this year, and these provisions would apply to that. When you have a four-ball stroke play competition with a concurrent individual competition, that as much as possible, separate the competitions, but when not possible, then the four-ball competition takes precedent. So an example of four-ball competition taking precedent would be with order of play. Otherwise, fairly similar to the match play decision. And while there are not many decisions under Rule 31, be aware that there are, you know, many more decisions under Rule 30, and a lot of the, a lot, but not all, but a lot of the decisions under Rule 30 also apply to four-ball stroke play. And some of them, like I think the, was it the last one we looked at? 30-3F/13, a lot of them will go on to say, okay, if this happened in stroke play, here's what the ruling is. So when boning up on four-ball stroke play, don't neglect the Rule 30 decisions. Now, any questions on Rule 31? All right. If not, on to Rule 32, bogey, par, and a Stableford competition. As you know, this year, the WSGA is expanding its use of Stableford competitions, which I think is a terrific move. I think there are many benefits to Stableford in terms of, you know, the enjoyment, the pace of play, and so forth, and hopefully we'll continue to see that trend, because, especially Stableford, is a very, extremely popular form of play in many other parts of the world, where, say, in Australia, that's by far the predominant form of play down there. So 32-1, perhaps the single most important point to realize with all these forms of competition is that even though the scoring is very different than normal stroke play, they are still forms of stroke play, and therefore, stroke play rules will apply. But what's interesting is in each case, you're playing against a fixed score at each hole. And in bogey and par competition, well, in par competition, obviously, you're playing against par, and you don't see it much anymore, but a bogey competition is not just par plus one, it's often just a relaxed form of par, where, say, a 460-yard hole might be a par four, but a bogey five. So a course might have a par 72, but a bogey score 76 or something like that. So it's just a little more relaxed form of par. So the scoring is made as in match play. So for example, if you're playing a par competition, and you par the first hole, then you're all square against Mr. Par. If you bury the second hole, you go one up. But then if you lose, then if you bogey four, three and four, then you go one down, and so forth. And the winner is whoever is the most successful. So it could well be, and unlike regular match play, you keep playing to the end, and that the winner of a bogey or par competition could be the person who, say, is only four down after 18 holes. So even though he lost to par, he still did better than everyone else. He may have been four down, but the next best person may have been six down after 18. So how is scoring done? The marker is responsible for marking only the gross number of strokes for each hole whether the competitor makes a net score equal to or less than the fixed score. So in a par competition, what does wonders for pace of play is that once you've, you know you're not going to make par or hole, you might as well just pick up and go to the next hole, which is great. And that's what's so nice about all these forms of play, being stroke plays. You can have a large number of players playing against each other simultaneously, but not have the drudgery of having everyone hole out and take forever the fight. If you have a bad hole, you just pick up. In par competition, you just lose the hole and continue on. A few notes, competitor's score is adjusted by deducting a hole or holes under the applicable rule for the following. So while ordinarily in stroke play, if a player is guilty of, say, a breach of the 14 club rule, we know it's two strokes per hole, maximum of four strokes for the rounds, that in this case, in a par competition, the player would still have two holes deducted because scoring is done just as in match play. And the competitor is responsible for reporting the fact regarding the breach to the committee before returning the scorecard, because otherwise, the committee wouldn't know. And it's, and it's important sense to be in there, because otherwise, there's not another rule that would require the player to report the facts, and he would be, still be returning a correct gross score. Then Note 2 talks about breaches of the time of starting and undue delay and the deduction of one hole for that. All right, on to Stableford. So scoring on Stableford is made by points. So the scoring on stableford is made by points, ooh, in relation to a fixed score. And notice, we talk about fixed score here. In many cases, the fixed score will be par, but doesn't have to be. For example, if you're having an event with, um, uh, beginners or something, the fixed score might be double bogey on the hole. So if you make a six on a par four, you earn two points and so forth. So if you are conducting a stableford competition, uh, the committee does need to specify what the fixed score is, that it's not automatic that it's against, uh, par. And the winner is the competitor who scores the highest number of points, and the marker is responsible for marking only the gross number of strokes at each hole, whether the, uh, net score earns one or more points. So again, one of the benefits of stableford, once you reach a point where you know you're not going to earn any points, uh, you can just pick up and go to the next hole, which helps the pace of play and often helps your, uh, mental state as well. Note one, if the competitor's in breach of a rule for which there's a maximum penalty, for example, with the fourteen club rule, he must report the facts to the committee before returning his card. If he doesn't do so, he's disqualified, then the committee will actually, will deduct points, uh, uh, two points for each hole at which a breach occurred. So all of this is, uh, really just to ensure that the player is penalized. So while ordinarily in stroke play, let's say if on the eighth hole, you realize you started with fourteen, with fifteen clubs, ordinarily you add two penalty strokes to the first hole, two penalty strokes to the second hole, uh, but what if on each of those holes, you made eight? Uh, well, this provision will ensure that you're still penalized, even though you, uh, played those holes poorly. And then note two is similar, so on bogey and par competitions for time of starting and undue delay, it's a deduction of points rather than an addition of penalty strokes. And then note three gives, uh, maybe, uh, an option for, uh, pace of play. Now, thirty-two dash two, so for all three forms of play, bogey, par, and stableford, the competitor is disqualified, uh, if he incurs the disqualification penalty under any of the following. So for example, if he, um, uh, makes a stroke at a non-conforming ball, he is disqualified. In all other cases where a breach would result in disqualification, he is disqualified only for that hole. Again, the most common example being failure to hole out. Player doesn't hole out the eighth hole, he just doesn't earn any points for that hole, which is, you know, part of the, uh, appeal of stableford. So we look at the decisions, and, uh, decision thirty-two dash one slash two goes even one step, uh, farther than just talking about picking up on a bad hole, raises the question of, gee, what if a player just, uh, omits a few holes? Uh, is that, uh, okay? The answer is yes, just any hole for which he makes no return is regarded, uh, as a loss. So if you decide, if you run out of time, you just play sixteen holes, then you lose seventeen, eighteen in a bogey or par competition or in stableford, you just don't earn any points on those two holes. And, let's see, that was really, I think, of the most noteworthy decision there. Any, uh, questions on rule, uh, thirty-two?
Yeah.
A question for Bill. Bill, you know, is any, uh, way of knowing or feel for whether, uh, stableford scoring has changed the outcome of some of the, like, for example, uh, senior tour events where somebody, they have been, still played, would have won, but instead of stableford, another person won, or is it pretty much all the points?
Not really, and I try to point this out, if you've played in a senior tour event, regardless of whatever par is on a course, par in stableford is always going to be thirty-six points, whether the par of the course is seventy, seventy-one, two, or like at West Bend, seventy-three. And for every stroke, you are above thirty-six, you would be that many, in all likelihood, under par in a normal round, a stroke play round. So if you have forty points, you have four more points than thirty-six. In a stroke play competition, you'd be four under whatever the par of the course is. Where you generally see the differences aren't on the winning scores, it's on the losing scores, or the not winning scores, for those of you that are politically correct. Uh, you know, someone could have, you know, and why we changed it at the Net Partners Championship last year, people, because of the weather and the wind, what have you, difficulty in the course, there were people making twelves, thirteens, fourteens, fifteens. And, you know, that just becomes the equivalent of a net double bogey. You know, you, you don't lose all those additional strokes that you do.
So what was this, at University Ridge?
It was at the Legend of Bergamot, and it, probably forty-five degrees on September eleventh or twelfth, whenever it was, the wind was going around twenty to thirty miles an hour, it was a little bit of sprinkle here and there, it was just a Chamber of Commerce Day.
What's, where's the authority for having, uh, points different than what the rules say?
Oh, oh, all right, that's a good question. You all remember the tournament at Castle Pines, where they would use what they would call modified stableford scoring? And the late English golf writer, Peter Doberiner, would, you know, say, you can't call it net modified stableford, but stableford, if it's stableford, it's very specific, you have to use these point values. And I think he came up with the term of whatever stableford is spelled backwards. So that's what they should call it. But you're right, strictly speaking, there is no, uh, authority for that.
That's a brave thing.
But, but on the other hand, uh, I think it's fair to say that there's nothing in the rules that prohibits a player, a, a committee from establishing some other point system. Uh, they, what do they call it, a stableford? That, if it's true stableford, this is the points, point values. Is that?
So you're saying that a committee can decide, okay, we're going to give, uh, ten points for this?
Well, I, and if, if, well, if, if a committee were to say, okay, uh, par is two points, a birdie's five, and we lose ten, then you are, a little bit like Ken's, uh, format, you're now playing a form of golf that's not covered by the rules of golf. But, uh, in practice, what, what a committee will do is say, okay, this is the point system, and the rules for stableford will apply, even though strictly speaking, if something comes up, the USGA, you know, would or could say, but the rules don't cover this form of play, we can't answer any questions.
Someone in response to Gary's question, and to Bill's response, okay, in the senior association now, they asked, it's, it's some stableford, you know, so I talked to the developer of the bent man, and, uh, and as soon as I mentioned to him, he said, well, are you going to use stableford or quota? And I said, well, I really wasn't concerned about quota, and then it said, well, in quota, all the senior events don't use stableford, they use quota points. And so as I mentioned it to him, he started to chuckle, saying that, you really going to adopt this system? He says, now you're going to see those sandbaggers coming out, can't believe. And, uh, we did, for one event, you know, I can't tell, I don't know who's a sandbagger or not like that, but, uh, I'm just curious, after a period of time, you know, like, you evaluate winners, you know, that, especially if they have players that are similar, that play week after week, or month after month like that, it might be able to tell, but, uh, that's interesting, you know, right now, you know, have you isolated somebody winning that has never won before because it's a stableford format, or a quota format?
Yeah. I honestly, the most important part of stableford is, and bogey and par, they are stroke play competition. It is not that different than a normal round of golf. And, you know, I think the best thing we tell people at the beginning of a stableford competition is, while keeping score for whoever, whomever you're keeping score, write down gross scores like you would in a normal round of golf. Don't worry about what your stableford points are, we put those point values on there. I, I guess the interesting thing, I was wondering, we put par equals two points, we don't really say fixed.
I, I think the implication, right? The implication is that the fixed score is par.
You have to post all your high numbers like that, so therefore your, your numbers come up, or a stableford, you can throw out those high numbers, and so therefore that person who, uh, is more inconsistent game, but, uh, has some ability, should sort of come to the top. I think this is what, uh, they were referring to. My question is, why don't they refer to quota points in here, and it's basically the same, same method? I mean, sure, the rule would be identical, but the, you know, points.
Well, and you're right, and, and to what Dan said, what, would there really be any harm if there was a, note four, saying, a committee may adopt a different point system if it wishes?
What is the quota?
Well, you adjust each individual's handicap to, uh, the difference of handicap from thirty-six, I did the number like that.
Arnold, thank you, one of the, the quota point.
Let's say you had a thirty-five handicap.
Jeff and Jeff.
Your quota would be one. I don't, that'd give one point, and I'm not sure. Go to the plus, you know, or die, or over the minus.
I'm guessing that USGA doesn't want to pay favor to a system that awards, um, a difference between a bogey, par, eagle, any more than one point for the difference.
Well, and that's what's interesting, you remember the, uh, international at Castle Pines, where I think they would almost change the point system every year, but I think the common thing was a par was zero points, maybe a bogey minus one, maybe a double bogey minus three, and a birdie plus two or three, I think eagle was five, double eagle was eight or ten, something like that. And, and that would be interesting to do a statistical analysis of that, of say, if a player goes out, shoots what would be a normal seventy in the individual stroke play, what he would receive in regular stableford, and what his points would be in, say, the international system. Because I would think that there's a fair, fair chance that, that the international system, whoever wins, is not a person who'd have the lowest seventy-two hole.
If you made nine birdies and nine bogeys, you should even par. And so according to the stableford, you get thirty-six points. If you make, in their game, you make nine birdies and nine bogeys, you end up with forty, thirty-six and a, forty-five points.
Correct.
So in other words, birdies are worth more than one point, more than a par. And that's probably, I'm guessing that the USGA is saying that we don't authorize that.
Well, I don't know, but it's, I, I, obviously, they use that form of play at international to encourage aggressive golf, yeah, which is understandable from an entertainment perspective. And, uh, and as well as to emphasize the difference between the, between their tournament and the weekly PGA Tour event, in that, you know, if you adopt a different form of play, but at the end of the week, the leaderboard's going to be the same as if it was individual stroke play, then, you know, if you really accomplished anything. So maybe they were really playing to the fact that, hey, whoever the winner is, probably wouldn't be the winner if this was just normal stroke play.
That would rarely would be the same.
Yeah. Which is, uh, interesting, why the USGA doesn't want to do that, maybe, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know, and that, that question didn't come up during my time there, but it's hard, uh, to think of the downside to just letting committees adopt different, uh, point systems. And essentially, I don't know, I think the international started in, what, the mid-eighties or so, or does that sound about right? At the time, what the discussions were between the USGA and the PGA Tour in terms of saying, well, did the USGA, for example, say, hey, this is not an event conducted under the rules of golf? Which would be a pretty harsh thing to say, maybe accurate, but it'd be pretty harsh to say.
Well, many years ago, I talked to Mike Wilson, he played at Castle Pines, he, uh, first thirty-six hole, I asked him how he did. And he said, terrible. And I said, oh, he said, uh, he played in the first thirty-six hole, he said, I had thirty-five pars and one birdie. And he said, I was like, uh, almost at the bottom of the list, or something like that. I mean, that, you know, that's sad to hear.
Now, it's interesting, it was a shame to see that, uh, tournament go away, because that was, you know, uh, you know, something different to watch. You know, that, that was a lot of fun. All right, well, tell me, uh, you know, I hadn't planned to go beyond thirty-two today. Would you like to go, would you like to cover rule thirty-three, or just save thirty-three and thirty-four for next week? Um, I see a little snow's come down, I don't think we're supposed to get, it sounds like we could get an inch or so, uh, nothing dramatic, but, uh, what?
Thirty-three and thirty-four should be covered together.
Okay. Well, I'll, we do those, uh, we'll save those for next week, uh, and we have some time, obviously, so any questions about, uh, anything, that we've covered or haven't covered?
Well, I'm going back to the, uh, father official, uh, decision, uh, about, uh, maybe do a job like you for, you can be with your father and, of course, in all probability, I would not spend the time, so I will not personally, uh, uh, if I'm going to have to be played.
Well, Lou, I, I, the question of having the official and or four caddie look for a player's ball when he's played a provisional, you know, it is, is a tough one. And one complicating factor is that if you're out there, say, two-hundred-and-fifty yards, you don't know for sure if that second ball is a provisional, or if it's just the ball in play. But if you assume that it is a provisional ball, as I said, I would lean towards searching for it. And, you know, and as, as we, as Bill and I talked about earlier, the fact that if it is a provisional ball, uh, you know, when a player plays a provisional ball, he, he is essentially saying, I don't want to have to play this ball, but I will play it in case I can't find my original ball. In other words, he's saying from the beginning that he would rather find and play his original ball. So using that as a starting point, I would tend, you know, have there been situations where it's a black and white case, where you just know that if a player finds this ball in such a spot, that he would have to go play again or stroke a distance, and maybe you're slow to go help him look for it, or, or slow to go over there and look for it, or you don't even go there to look for it? Yeah, occasionally there are some times, but I think the, the tricky part is with the, uh, four caddies, and sometimes four caddies are golfers, sometimes they're not golfers, that you want to make things as simple as possible for, for them, and I think for them, I would just instruct them to search for balls. Because I think if you tell them, well, in some cases, search for balls, in other cases, don't, then, I think they're just going to be very confused, and they're not going to accomplish what you want them to accomplish, probably.
Hole sixteen at University Ridge is a, a good example, because it's, you know, woods left and crack right, and then, and it's all hole. And so we always had a spotter right, left, you know, you had to assist, because any shot right or left is, is, uh, in trouble. And, and then the question was, is after a while, uh, they would find the balls, you know, like that, in, in basically unplayable situations, and whether or not a provisional was, was put in place or not, I, it, it depend on the player. So they'd have to prop back to the tee and reload like that, and, uh, that's the point, finally, we sort of said, uh, take a fast look, you know, for the ball, and if you don't really find it, right then, come out and then wait till the player gets up there, I think that's what you.
Right, you know, a good comment I heard once from, I think many of you know David Stabler, who works for the USGA, and he's also a very good player, so he's played in a fair amount of competition. He once, I thought put it in a good way to me, to say that when he's looking for his original ball, he will only look in a place where he wants to play from, uh, which, and I thought, oh, that made a lot of sense, meaning he's not looking in the bushes.
I will sometimes say that to a player, looking for his ball, just in jest, in our, things moving, I'll say to him, don't look where you don't want to find it.
You don't have to look, even if you did a provisional, you don't have to, you don't have to look for it.
Yeah, that's right, there, there's no obligation to look for the original ball. Uh, so for example, Mickelson's case, if he was just out, uh, playing a friendly round out in, uh, Garry Marshall's, he would not have gone to look for his original ball. And that's fine.
But if a spotter or four caddie finds a ball in that area, you're obligated to.
To identify the ball that might be yours.
But Jim, if I'm playing human match, I'm going to go find it.
And that, that's the tricky thing, is that, you know, if your opponent is not, is either very competitive, or maybe not so friendly, or both. very competitive, or maybe not so friendly, or both, you know, there's nothing saying that he can't go look for the original ball.
But if you're playing stroke play, you can avoid all that by hustling up and hitting your provisional, and then you take, then that ball is lost.
That's right, that's a good point. Because the question came up with the Mickelson case, what if he yelled down into the ravine, hey, don't look for my ball, then they continued to search for it? And he, you know, he blasted his provisional ball, so his provisional was well ahead. What if, when he saw them continuing to look, he rushed over and played his provisional? Could he have done that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
My university bowl was twelve, it's par three, they used to do on Thursday, they had the pin in the back, and everybody hits it over the top of the green, which is nothing but jump five. And so the kid that found the ball there, and even looked for it after they hit the provisional on the green. And then they still, you know, they'll still go back and look for it, as opposed to saying, I'm on the green in three, you know, am I going to get on the green in two if I can hack it? Well, the girls can hack it, some of the guys think they can hack it, and hit it up there. And so you go back and you look, and then you get a call, sorry.
Now you gotta go back to the, you gotta go back to the tee.
Have you not been to University Ridge?
No, I...
We are so getting you there this spring.
Seriously, we really should have a meet for golf and lunch there or something, no, so. I know, it sounds like four, twelve, and sixteen are the...
Over.
Who's that? It's actually a five.
Dan is the same thing, I mean, what I, if I'm working, what I do is if they get it into the trees, I won't go in and look for it, if they get it near the edge of the tree, whether it's get out to the public.
Oh, okay, okay.
And you tell them what they can do, if they want it, we'll help them. I always kind of think about whether there's an advantage of finding the ball.
Okay, I think that's sensible, and you're kind of two different arguments, you know, what do you tell the four caddies who might not have the experience, who might not want making judgment calls and confusing them, and what do you do as an official? And I think it's safe to say, as an official, we've probably all, at times, not gone to help someone look for a ball.
I would beg to differ about looking for a ball. My last experience at University Ridge, I was on hole ten, and it was the state high school girls tournament, and a girl hit one, and it bounced across the cart path just into the woods, maybe a yard into the woods. And I signaled safe. And I saw this girl go back to her bag, grab a ball, tee it up, and that, whatever ball it was, went flying into the left woods. She marched back to her bag, grabbed another ball, and that ball went further right into the right woods where she already was, and she went to go to the bag to get another ball. All I'm thinking about is, oh, this girl's going to love me, I've got her ball right here, unplayable, she'll have a clear shot, maybe relieved from the cart path, she'll get even further out. She probably hit six more balls off the tee that kept going left and right. And the whole time, I am thinking to myself, oh, this is just getting better, I mean, she's really going to be happy if she still has golf balls. And when she finally got up, and it literally, she went back to get like a pitching wedge, hit about three more shots, and when she finally got up to where this ball was, I thought, this is going to be awesome, this girl. I was trying to figure out, and I think in my head, she was lying like eighteen or nineteen, and her coach told her to not say the word provisional in case she found it. So this girl went from what potentially was line one with an unplayable, hitting her third shot, her tournament was over from the word go. And that's why I would always lean towards trying to find a golf ball. The player can always proceed under rule twenty-eight, and yeah, one of those options, even if you strive to provisional down the middle, is to go back to the tee. It's not the greatest thing, if you're in golf administration, to send someone back to the tee, but that's what the rules are, and that's what you have to deal with.
That gal, the coach, had poor eyesight, right?
This girl, I'm not kidding you, the girl was in tears the rest of the tenth hole, and I saw the rest of the round, but I can imagine those tears continued for all eighteen holes, and I felt terrible for her.
They stopped, they stopped.
No, it was the coach's fault.
They stopped at the hole when I asked them, what's your scores on ten, eleven, and twelve? The tears came when you, when you said, I had a fourteen on ten, and woo!
It's stableford, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Isn't that a great case for stableford?
Yeah, I have a question, and sort of a practical one, I'm dropping, you see it all the time where the person thinks that they're better off dropping the head eye than the tail eye. We have a rule of thumb, is how high above the shoulder is it before we say, I'm sorry, you have to drop?
Well, I think that's, you know, it's a good question, Dan, because strictly speaking, who holds their arm exactly at shoulder height when dropping a ball? So there has to be some margin for error. And I think the starting point would be, these should be the same margin for error each way. So what that is, I don't know what, I'm not going to tell you if it's ten degrees or five degrees or twelve degrees.
Do you have a subjective goal? I mean, do we do like six inches or foot?
No, I, you know, when they pointed out in USGA rules seminars, when you watch Tiger Woods drop the ball, you could argue that he gets one stroke each time he drops the ball, because he's way above the shoulder height.
In fact, Daniel, be glad to know this week, I've been working on the slides for the WSJA rules seminar, I did rule twenty this week, and we grabbed a slide of a girl dropping a ball from definitely too high. So you can use that as the extreme, at least.
So there needs more answers at one.
Well, but the nearest point of relief, you sort of had a gentleman's agreement, a general person's agreement, that if you do it within six inches, you comply. I was wanting to...
Yeah, I was going to say, within six inches, you need a rule. I mean, it's subjective, actually.
Yeah, it's hard, well, I'm just trying to think what six, if you say that's shoulder height, six inches would be like that. So I think six inches within perpendiculars, I think that's safe. But whether eight inches is definitely not, I'm not sure. And I know it's...
It's hard to draw that line.
It's, I know it's a cheap way out, but I kind of echo, you know, what Ken said, that often when someone's definitely, when somebody can definitely do better, you know it, when you see it, which I know is not a nice, tight answer. But in practice, it works out well. And one of the things with Tiger, it can be confusing, is sometimes people raise their arms very high, but then they drop their wrist down. So where the ball actually is, might be close to shoulder height, even though the top of the wrist is well above. And sometimes, some people, we, there's, you see, like, there's at least one slide of Tiger, who has just dropped the ball, and his hand's way up here, and sometimes people after they drop it, they raise their hand, which further complicates things.
There's an online question about, you know, a player hitting a ball into a bunker that requires, that's buried and requires an extensive search, and if the players or their side start searching for the ball, and then subsequently requesting ruling to know the extent of what they can do. Is there any amount of time added, I know the answer, any amount of time added in waiting for an official? If they keep looking, or again, back to Cece's question, if they stop looking? Once that clock starts, it continues on, and I think that would hold true whether or not you're waiting for a ruling.
So she's asking if the safe player looks for three minutes, and then wants a ruling at that point, as the clock stops?
Yeah, they start...
I think in that case, the answer really is and needs to be that the clock continues to tick, because otherwise, it would, players could find a way to use that to their advantage.
He was trying to loophole with the lost ball, essentially, yeah.
The one interesting point with that, and I'm not sure really of the answer, so I'm a little hesitant to bring it up, but I welcome your views, is the case where, let's say, Bill and I are playing together, I hit my tee shot into the right trees, you know, we're down there, or in the right rock, we're down there looking for the ball for a couple of minutes, then we see Dan and Andy waiting impatiently on the tee, and realize it's going to be a couple of minutes while we search for my ball. So following the etiquette section in the book, we wave them up. But on the other hand, we also don't want to be struck by one of their balls, so we then go stand thirty yards off to the side, and really stop looking for the ball. So in a situation like that, what should we do with the clock, with the five-minute clock? And I think common sense would be that the five-minute clock should stop at that point. But is there any provision in the rules to support that, to allow that? I'm not sure there is, which creates a pretty awkward situation, that Bill and I are doing what the etiquette section suggests we do, and we wave this group through, but there's really, not only not an incentive, there's a disadvantage by our doing so. So I'm not sure what the answer is. So that's one you'll mull over, and I mean it, I appreciate your, you know, thoughts, if you think about that, and I don't know what you think.
How can you wave them through without the team? How do you change your position?
Well, among our takes, the committee, or under six-three B, that allows the committee to ratify after the fact what the players have done.
If I'm a player, I'm not going to rely on the goodwill of the committee to ratify after that, and say, no, you go play.
All right, and let's just say, we're out having, let's make it as simple as possible, you and I are having a nice match at University Ridge, a number sixteen, I hit my ball into a junk home right hand, so the group behind us isn't playing in the competition, so Andy and Arnold are just out having a good time behind us, and we wave them through. You and I are in a very tight match. So then what? And then we stop looking, does the, go somewhere safe while they play? It's kind of an interesting question, because what makes it tough is that specifically, not just, well, specifically encouraged, act is, but there seems to be a detriment to doing so, which...
He plays in the mixed doubles match, and on the third hole, his wife has a coronary on the third hole, and he just keeps playing because he can't wave anybody through. You're going to be really good. You're going to be loved when you keep your covers.
You know, the dropping, nineteen-seventy-nine, in the Wisconsin State Open, at one item, a player is leading, an amateur, young amateur player, leading the tournament by seven shots with six holes to play, playing along with Larry Kiziany from Cherokee, who was both both. And the spectator comes up and said, what's the dropping procedure like that? He says, you know, is it, you know, hold your hand out and drop it? I said, no, dropping procedure is only that. He said, well, the player did it just because he hit a ball out of bounds from the bunker, and then re-dropped it this way, and then proceeded, knocked it on, and went on, and was leading by six shots. Who was it? It was that player right over there, personally, who was leading the tournament. And so we had to go up and ask him, how did you drop, you know, in that, and he said, drop like that. I think, why, you know? Because in high school, WIA had in their section, had a ruling, because they were playing public golf courses, is that they weren't preparing bunkers, and therefore, any time you had a drop in a bunker, you could drop it straight out and not have to go behind your shoulder. So he was a high school player, and that's how he dropped, and he fessed up to it. So he had shot sixty-eight in the morning round, and therefore, he was a two-stroke penalty applied for that, which he changed his score, so the course was scored lower than he had, and therefore, he was disqualified, and Larry Kiziany won the Golden State Open championship that year because of that dropping, you know, incorrectly, nineteen-eighty-four, they changed the rule.
No.
Great, isn't it?
If there, in rules, unplayable twenty-eight A, is there instructions as to when you can declare the ball unplayable, and implement twenty-eight A?
When, meaning, while the ball's in motion, or?
No, no, no. The ball's in the bunker, and you decide that you want to play the ball where you played the previous shot. Do you have to declare before, at a certain time, that you want to invoke twenty-eight A?
Oh, it's this year, so let's say I've hit my tee shot into a bunker, and I want to use the stroke in distance option, do I have to say that I'm going to do that at some point?
Well, if you lift the ball in your hand and then say, I'm going to invoke twenty-eight A, is it too late?
Oh, okay, I see, okay, I see what you're saying, that's a good point. And it relates a little bit to a decision under eighteen, eighteen-two A, is it twelve-point five? Yeah, yeah, eighteen-two A, twelve-point five, that what it talks about is that as long as you have, even to yourself, you have decided that you're going to proceed under rule twenty-eight before you lift the ball, then, okay. What you can't, what you can run into trouble is, let's say, you lift the ball from the bunker for some other reason, that, you know, that you think you're entitled to free relief from the wet sand, or something like that. And then you lift the ball, and then you decide to take refund of rule twenty-eight, but since you hadn't lifted it with the intention of proceeding under rule twenty-eight, and there was not, and you hadn't lifted it under legitimate reason, then you would have a penalty stroke for lifting the ball in play without having yet deemed it unplayable.
Ken, you don't have to declare that.
Yeah, you don't have to say anything outside, as long as, at least, to himself, he is saying, yeah, I'm going to deem it unplayable, and then he picks it up.
Now I'm in the bunker, and I lift the ball with the idea of, is it twenty-eight B or C?
Okay.
And I realize that neither one of them is going to give me a shot.
Okay.
Should I now say I want to move twenty-eight A?
Okay, so you lift the ball from the bunker...
Yes.
Thinking you want to proceed under B or C, then you realize, you know, A, it's going to be my best chance. That's fine, as long as you've not yet put it into play under B or C. So that's okay.
I have a question about, it comes up, Strawberry Creek and fifteen holes, a par...
Three.
Tree is very long, and it all starts to jump to the left.
Lateral waterhead.
Hit is there, but the question is, people hit it into that, they want to find it, it's a hazard, and they come down there, and they're looking around, but the time they find it, there's not a blade of grass, there's nothing, there's nothing left, because they have...
I kind of like that question.
They have so destroyed, cleared out, cleared out the area.
Okay.
And of course, after you get ten groups in there, there's not the matter.
So your point is, yeah, by noon, the whole area is buttoned?
Right, or more importantly, for the one person, what is the limitation on the thirteen-two violation, that the person is...
No, it's a good question, and there are several points on it, so let's go through a few variations, and it really doesn't matter if it's in a hazard or if it's just through the green and brown hills, you know, just tall grass anywhere. Let's say a player goes into tall grass to search for his ball, and he starts moving grass around, and if, while doing so, whether with his hands or unintentionally with his feet, but if doing so, that does in fact improve the lie or area the tent stands or swing for his ball, that is a breach of rule one dash two if he himself does it. So then there's the, so just, first with that, are you okay with that?
No, but does that rule kick in immediately, even though he says, I'm going back to the tee because that's...
Well, yeah, well, with the Strawberry Creek example, if he says, look, I just want to find my ball, I'm going to go back to the tee, then I think he has protected himself with both thirteen-two and eighteen dash two A. So I think that's okay if he says that. But if he doesn't say anything, and he himself improves something, then it's a breach. So then there's the related question of, what if a fellow competitor, with the player's knowledge, you know, is helping him search for it, you know, flat, pushes down some grass, and incidentally improves the lie, you know, unintentionally, so there's no breach of one dash two by a fellow competitor, then... Then even though the person was doing, fellow competitor was doing this with the player's knowledge, we're not going to penalize the player, that the player is not going to be considered to have authorized this breach of Rule 10-2. So there's no penalty. And then the remaining question, and it's an interesting one, is is the player under any obligation to kind of recreate the lie and fluff back up the grass? And believe it or not, the answer is that no, he's not. There's no requirement in the rules or decisions for him to do that, which, you know, understandably bothers some people. In fact, I was telling, who was it, Jed?
Jed.
Jed, who sent an email that, I don't know if you remember, this was probably '07, '08 or so, when two incidents happened within a few months of each other, there were real contrast. Khan Montgomery's ball in the tournament in Asia was in the rough, play was suspended. When he came back out to resume play, he, I'm trying to think if the rule back then was place or if it was drop. But whatever, he put the ball back in a spot that people didn't think was, they thought he could have done better in terms of replacing the ball. And there was a, there was a pretty big controversy for a while. And the question was, well, did he do a good enough job? And on bounce, the European tour official looked at and said, yeah, okay, he did a good enough job, no penalty. Because he had to estimate the point because his ball marker was missing and everything. Then a few months later, at a tournament, may well even been in Ireland, just to make it even more extreme, Darren Clark hit his tee shot into the rough, play was suspended, players resumed the next morning. And overnight and during the suspension, you know, all being in Ireland, all spectators were searching for the ball and make sure he could find it and the whole area is flattened down. So the night before, he would have probably just had to take a wedge, hack out to the fairway, but now he could have hit, you know, five iron from there. And so when it was time to resume play, he asked the officials, he said, you know, is this right? That I can just hit a five iron from here? And they said, yeah, that, no, that is right. There's no obligation to stand the grass back up. He just, he thought about for a minute, said, you know, that's just not right. So beginning with the clean line, just took his wedge out and pitched out to the fairway, doing what he thought he would have had to do the previous day. Which I thought, you know, says a lot about him and I think that's pretty interesting. Yeah.
Okay, you're an official, you're on the hole 16. Here's a situation, you see somebody rotating the ball on the putting green, the ball is not marked. You obviously know that's a rule violation. You walk down and come from that, and his fellow competitors tell you, well, he's been doing that the whole round. There's no statute of limitations in skilled play. If it's a mess play, it'd be a different situation. But has anybody ever, I always have preparation that I'm going to come across. You have to go back, does that player have to go back and somehow sort out how many times he's done that?
Okay, well, you know, you raise a good point with the question of what happens if a player breaches the same rule many times throughout the round? Do you ever just say enough's enough or what do you do? And then your specific question was what, a player's on the putting green without marking the ball's position, rotates the ball to line it up and putts. And then when you're, then you ask him, but he's not trying to move the ball closer to the hole. He just is touching it without marking its position. And when you go up and ask him about that, you know, and often what will happen is, you know, blockers being overly honest people, they'll say, geez, I've been doing that for 10 years on every single putting green. So let's say, and this happens on the 16th hole, so then you have to think, okay, do you go back through every hole and say, okay, how many, on the fourth hole, did you do this before every putt and so forth? And that is a case where you'd have to do it and you'd have to just add up the strokes.
If you do intentionally, the rule may be changed as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, if it's the case where he's intentionally putting the ball closer to the hole, then that's, we have a decision under 33-7, so the player should be disqualified. But let's, let's say, take something else where you see a player in a bunker and he takes a practice swing and hits the sand. This happens on 16 at University Ridge, I assume there's at least a bunker there.
There's leagues.
And, and you say, you know, I'm sorry, you're not allowed to touch the sand in the bunker before your stroke. He says, geez, I always do that. Then, you know, you need to say, okay, well, how many bunkers you've been in today? And did you, on which holes did you touch the sand in each one? And if he's been in five other bunkers, done that each time, he has to add five more two stroke penalties. Because there just isn't a maximum for the round for those rules unless the rule goes out of its way to cap it, you know, like a 14 club rule does. Yeah. Well, I'm really curious now to go to University Ridge. All three players made eagle? Okay, so what's the fuss about? That sounds like a pretty straightforward hole.
If you hit the tee shot in the right place, if it's in the right place, it's a relatively easy par five.
It would be a good place for you to go with PGA to show how to mark the court. I don't know if that's always been properly marked, but.
Can we, can we go back to the question about the ball? I mean, if you, if you don't mark your ball, you know, a lot of days put the line on it. So if you're actually not, you're lifting your ball, it's still on a, on the green and you're just turning it. I mean, I would never do that. I mean, so.
Do you have a marking on it?
No.
Yeah, and the reason that that is a breach, even though you're not changing the position of the ball, is that Rule 18-2A does prohibit purposely touching the ball, so.
Going back to your question about marking your ball and the cumulative penalties that I've heard prior to the, when it was observed or called upon by a fellow competitor. And said, you've been, we've been watching, you've been doing this every hole or many holes, you know, prior to that. So you confront the competitor and you ask him how often you've been in it and I don't remember. And the fellow competitor says, yeah, you did it on, I saw it on this hole, this hole, this hole and this hole. So I would assume that when that complaint is made by the fellow competitor, would be the holes that you would assess a penalty to.
Okay, so you're saying if the, if you observe a player rotating his ball without marking its position on the 16th green and you learn that he did that on other holes, but he says, like, I can't remember how many holes I did that on, but a fellow competitor says, look, I know for sure you did it on one, five, seven, nine and 12. Then, you know, again, the determining questions of fact, you get all the evidence you can and then you see which way that indicates. And based on, if the player says, look, I have no idea, but a fellow competitor says, I know for sure it happened on these holes, then I think that evidence indicates that, yeah, it happened on those five holes, whatever. Yeah.
I saw this last, I had a couple of times of watching the LA Open and I saw it happen twice where the competitor's ball purposely left close to the hole. The baby ate somebody else in there who, you know, got it instead of going over and then stopped the whole thing. I know we covered this a few weeks ago, but did you go over that once again and dodge the?
Okay, yeah, yeah, so the question was, seen some players at Riviera yesterday who appeared to leave a ball near the hole in a position that it could serve, that could assist a fellow competitor who's also off the putting green. From a rules perspective, what's the ruling? Well, let's start with the black and white. If the two players themselves agree to leave the ball there for the purpose of assisting one of them, then they're disqualified. So the question then is, have they really agreed to do that? Because I think you could argue that it doesn't have to be a verbal agreement. There could be, you know, you know, a wink and a nod or something. You could say that, that in some cases that that's enough. Or is it just kind of an understanding that all tour players have that that's just what you do? And then there could be some legitimate reasons where sometimes the next person to play is just really ready to play and he doesn't want to wait for the other person to go up out of bunker and lift his ball and so forth. So there can be legit.
I think that's the real reason.
Yeah, that's the real reason, just to save time.
Because otherwise the tour could clean it up like this. The tour could clean it up like this, just, you can't do that anymore. Obviously, the reason is that they don't want to wait. And I think that's a legitimate reason.
Yeah, I think so because I think usually around the greens, people are kind of ready to go.
But it looked like, to me, it looked like there was one or two times where that would have been easy for it. Go and walk there and mark your ball before the next, you know, some of these guys take it very easy to hit their shot. It seemed like it was easy for somebody, the guy who ball was close to the hole to mark his ball.
And it's interesting, I've never had a conversation with a tour official as to what they think goes on with situations like that. If they're concerned that there is, people are, there's just an understanding to do that or if it's, as Ken said, just keep playing, you know what, I'm not sure.
I think the other thing is, how many times has anybody around this table ever seen a ball strike another ball under those circumstances? I never have.
And partly, granted, the rule does say what it does, but I am, you know, much less bothered by that than some people are. Just because I think you could argue that perhaps that portion of the rule should be removed. Because I think you can make the case that, hey, if you're, if you have a ball beyond the hole and you want to use it backstop, you know, you're just playing the course as you find it. What's the harm in that?
I saw that a game happened in senior tour and I think it was Colin Montgomery had a ball in the bunker and it was a ball laying just far close to the hole, just beyond the hole. And the player was walking up to market and Colin is in the bunker, like, he looks like he's ready to strike his ball, you know, you can't tell. And I think that when the player went up there, I think he feared to go down and mark his ball because maybe Colin was going to hit a shot, so he just sort of stood there and did nothing. You know, and then Colin then didn't go, he made a couple of other checks, you know, and then went down and he get the ball out. Didn't get the ball and I guess, but he could have, he had certain time to mark it. But he personally ended up fearing that maybe he gets struck right there.
I had that feeling, I wouldn't have guessed that. You know, back away, anyway.
Colin's pretty good with me.
There's an online question regarding foursomes. And the question is, is a wrong ball treated the same as decision 29-1/1, which is foursomes A and B, A plays from outside the tee ground and is required to replay? You know, who plays the next stroke and does that stroke count?
Okay, so let's say that Bill and I are partners in foursome. Well, I guess it'd have to be foursome stroke play, because a match play would be pretty straightforward. Foursome stroke play and I tee off on the first hole, I'm supposed to. And we find a ball we think is mine and Bill plays that ball. Then we realize that was not my ball or our ball. So who, so we go back and we search for the tee shot and let's say we find it. So who would then play it? Then in that case, Bill would play it.
But that stroke would not count?
Yeah, that stroke would not count. So we've got a two stroke penalty and Bill would play the original ball. Okay, all right, well, anything else? Otherwise, just remember next week, final one is on Thursday from 8 to 12. And please come on with any questions, especially any questions from the practice exam you'd like us to go over or anything else in the rules reference guide. So otherwise, thank you all very much and hope you have a good weekend and.
And we really should look at a University Ridge outing.
That's a point, yeah, I'm not kidding.
It's a fun journey.
Well, I can tell you June 8th and June 9th will be a lot of these people there.
Are you saying if I were doing a better job as WSGA rules coach chairman, I would be there?
No, I wasn't saying that at all. What's interesting about it is you're watching, you're helping the players and you're trying to keep out of the way of the parents and the coaches.
Is that turned off?